... selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, May 31st, 2016. At six o'clock, we held an executive session where we discussed collective bargaining with non-union personnel. And we actually reviewed performance evaluations as the fire chief and the finance director/town accountant. No votes were taken, and now we're back into open session. So please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody for weekly briefing? Okay, public comments and announcements. I just want to comment how nice our beaches look. I'm sure most of you got a chance to get to some beach this weekend, maybe even just walking down or driving through, whatever. And we've seen some pictures of the outstanding work that the folks have done over at Department of Public Works with the stairs and that type of thing at different beaches. And things look really good. And thanks, everybody, for doing that. It's an important element and part of our tourist business and certainly a benefit that our citizens enjoy. So anybody else for public comments and announcements? All right. I can tell you want to get out of here quickly tonight. We'll move to the consent agenda, and I'll just point out that item F, which is to amend the personal bylaw compensation plan for FY 2017 and keep with union issues, will be brought back next week. We had some issues ourselves with it that need to be addressed. So we will do A through E. So Janelle, I would ask you to...
Could I just comment on that before, Mr. Chairman? The intent of what we want to do with this is all the union contracts have been settled. Everyone's getting 2% for FY 17. This is the personnel bylaw, which we want to do 2% for all the non-union people. What we realized when we put it in, what we realized today, is that there are some adjustments that have been made over the last six months that we didn't have reflected in that. So the only intent of it was the 2%, and then we do need to make some adjustments. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. All right. Janelle?
Quick question, Mr. Chairman. Shall I keep item A separate since Julie was not part of the board and should not be voting on those minutes?
Well, she can vote if she, as a recognition of the minutes, if she'd like to, unless you're uncomfortable doing that.
That's fine.
So let's include it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we, A, approve minutes for 1, May 9th, 2016, regular session; 2, May 16th, 2016, regular session; 3, May 16th, 2016, executive session; B, approve the application for one-day entertainment license by Harwich Conservation Trust for Wildlands Music and Art Stroll for September 10th, 2016; waive the $25 application fee; and approve use of Harbor Masters Bank Street building parking lot; C, approve the petition by EverSource Energy to install approximately 30 feet of conduit and cable to provide service at 23 Soundview Road contingent upon removal of extraneous cables they may have at the site; D, approve petition by EverSource Energy to install 30 feet of conduit and cable to provide service at 19 Quasim Lane; E, approve petition by Verizon Wireless to locate small-cell wireless antennas on existing utility poles at 24 Patricia Lane, 40 Harbor Road, and 17 Uncle Vini's Road.
Your second. Okay, moved in second to approve items A through F, or excuse me, A through E in the consent agenda discussion. Hearing them, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. Thank you. And no public hearings or presentations, no old business, and new business. New business, the first item I'm going to step down on and ask, Janelle is the clerk of the board, to take that item, please.
Is there a motion for the candidates for Board of Registars submitted by Republican Town Committee as stated in the packet?
Peter's asked me to make a motion to appoint Susan Mills as a registrar.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. It's a vote.
I can come back.
You can come back.
Actually, we liked it when you were out there.
I could just stay up there.
Okay, thank you. And a new business, item B, which is acknowledge receipt of performance evaluation of the finance director/town accountant and approve compensation increase. We're going to bring that back on June 27th, in our June 27th meeting. So item C, which is acknowledge receipt of performance evaluation for the fire chief and approve compensation increase, is next. We do review that in executive session. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to approve the acknowledgement of the receipt, of the performance evaluation for the fire chief and approve, approve compensation increase.
Second.
Okay, moved in second to acknowledge receipt of performance evaluation for the fire chief and approve the compensation increase. Discussion? Hearing them, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. Chief, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board. I appreciate your vote of confidence in this, and we work hard every day to do the best job that we all can, and I'm very proud of the Fire Department. They do outstanding work, every day.
Every day, including this weekend, I'm sure.
They, they had a very tough weekend, without getting into details, very busy and very challenging. I'm very proud of them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah. Okay. Next is library CPA project plan. The library project was approved at town meeting, and the intent here is to understand how we're going to move forward with this. I think Chris is what we're looking for in library trustees.
Yes, I'll, I'll start off, and obviously if there's any, any input from the library trustees. In terms of, there was a feasibility study that was done by an outside consultant. I think the library trustees have been very pleased with the work that's been done. And as part of the process, that was what was used as a basis for requesting funding from CPC. And Bob Cafarelli, our town engineer, who does a lot of the legwork for me regarding the, the different designer selection and the different bid laws, had indicated that under the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 7, Section C, Section, subsection 51H, that it allows for the Board of Selectmen acting as the approving authority for the designer selection in the town, that if the library trustees are comfortable with the consultant, that requests a selectman to allow that consultant to continue with the services of that firm to go beyond the feasibility study and to actually do the design improvements for the library. So what does that mean? It means he'll actually put together the specifications for how the work will be done. I think there was a lengthy discussion about kind of the, just not scraping the paint, but doing a chemical peel. Those types of decisions will be made in the design process, and when that gets bid, any contractor that bids it, if the decision is made to do chemical stripping, then the contractors that bid on the work would have to make sure they do it in that manner and in that format. So the, the reason for doing this, I think, it makes perfect sense to continue that if, if the town is comfortable with the way the feasibility study was done, to then have the same design consultant go ahead and put together the specifications. And we do have the, the second part, and I strongly recommend this, that once somebody designs it and lays out the process in which to do the work, then when the contractor comes in to do the work, you don't want to have somebody else come in and do what they call construction administration. It's best to have the person that designed it also then stay on to kind of oversee the project to make sure that people don't, not that they cut corners, but make sure people do it in the appropriate manner in accordance with the specifications. So this has a step where Bob Cafarelli had pointed this out, that it's up to the selectmen to decide in this circumstance if they're okay with having the designer go on and do the, the feasibility study consultant go on and do the design.
Chris, if I could, I thought I read somewhere that Sean Libby's going to manage the project.
The, the second part to this was on, and this is one that I have not had a chance to really actively talk to Ginny about, but once the design is done, then the question is, well, who do we want to have be the, the town interface, if you would? And, you know, I'm comfortable with having Sean be the, the primary interface with Bob Cafarelli being the assistants, but I think that with the library trustees, it's their building. I want to make sure that they have a, a role to play in this, so they would be the, the project, or they would be really the owners. And then Sean and Bob would actually work with the contractor to do it. And obviously, as Ginny, as the library director, would be the primary interface for, for Sean and Bob. So that part, I don't think we necessarily need to lay that process out tonight. Tonight really was before the board is, are you comfortable having the feasibility study consultant go on and be the designer of the, the project?
Well, I guess, I'm trying to wrap this all together, and that is, I thought I heard you say that during the construction phase, if you will, that this architect firm would also have some sort in their contract and oversee the project.
Yeah, actually, maybe just to provide a little bit better clarity, we, we just finished the Muddy Creek project. So when we did the Muddy Creek project, we have an owner's project manager. So in that circumstance, Bob Cafarelli acted as the owner's project manager, along with, I, I worked with him, obviously, I was very integral to that project, but he did the, that part on behalf of the owner. But then you have to have the designer actually make sure, so we had, McGuire was the, was the contractor that did the design. So McGuire also had a, a person on-site to make sure that it was being built as designed. So in this case, Sean Libby would act as the owner's project manager, and then this firm would act as the, the contract administrator, to make sure, design administrator, if you want to use that term.
Okay. To me, it's, it's not that complicated, quite frankly. It's not a structural thing that we're talking about here, like a bridge. It has footings and a lot of engineering associated with it. This is a lot of manual labor, it has to remove paint, has to, you know, prepare surfaces, replace some boards and whatnot.
I think Sean's more than capable of doing it.
So do I, so do I.
Absolutely.
I'm just trying to do this efficiently. I mean, and I'll point out that, you know, I don't know if anybody's gone to see St. Christopher's Church in Chatham, which is, we're going to happen to be a member of that church. We have a CPA grant from, from a year ago from Chatham, and that building, the historic part of it has been restored, there's been some other work done on the non-historic part. That'll finish up in about 10 days. You ought to go, somebody ought to go look at it, it's beautiful. And in that case, in that case, the architect was just put on hold once everything got bid, okay? Once everything got bid, the architect was just there waiting in case there were some questions or issues and whatnot, as opposed to coming down here from Boston or wherever to watch somebody paint something, or to watch somebody, you know, put an architectural detail up. It just isn't that complicated, quite frankly. There's no, there's no real testing that you're doing associated with it, and saved us, allowed us to live within the CPC grant. Now, the architect did such a good job that on the overall project, we'll be within, within 5% of what they estimated the cost would be, including about five change notices on rotten wood that wasn't expected. So if you design it right and do it right and do enough detail, you know, you can manage it. So I'm just saying that I think that Sean, between Sean and you and Bob Cafarelli can manage this project.
Yeah, I, I do think that, I don't disagree at all with that. What you see sometimes in, in these projects is if the, if the contractor has a question, they need to send a request for information, RFIs, what they're called. So we want to make sure that they're on retainer to be able to answer those RFIs. So that part, they, they will definitely play a role. I have seen, though, to your point, that sometimes you can have somebody scheduled to come down at the beginning of the project, middle of the project, maybe at the end of the project and do a review. I've seen other times in which they come down once, one time a week, one day a week. I've seen other times when they're more in advanced projects where they're there every single day. So that scope of, of what we need from them is something that I think we, we should discuss with them in terms of what is, seems appropriate for this project.
Yep. Michael?
So what part of this will the library trustees and the library director manage, and what part will we? I mean, what, what are you comfortable with?
I mean...
This is a town building, I would assume that this should be treated similar to what we were going to do with West Harwich. Is that the, is that the process?
Well, Wes Harwich was under the jurisdiction of the selectmen, so this is a little bit different, where this is a library building. In my mind, the way I've done, the way I like to do business is, where, where it is their building, that they should be comfortable with the design firm selected, when the bids come in to do the, the contract work, that that should be a recommendation from the library trustees to the selectmen, saying, yes, we agree with this bid award. So I think that they, you need to be comfortable with the process as we go through the entire process.
So are you comfortable with that part of the process? And how much should the town do? How much should administration do versus how much should the library trustees do? I mean, if they want us to do the paperwork, they're certainly not specialized, I don't think, in, in putting out a bid process. Maybe, maybe Ginny could answer. I, I, you know, this board, we, we want to, I, I would like to support the library trustees and the, and the library director and give them as many resources as we can.
I think the, the trustees have never had authority over the building itself. Under the charter, it talks about, I'll find the language, actually. The charter talks about, they have responsibility for acquisition of books, journals, periodicals, and other materials related to the library function. So they've never had authority over building projects, and that's why the renovation and all the, any major project that's done comes to the selectmen. And truthfully, quite frankly, we've been trying to get out of this business for many years, and, and for several years now, since Sean's been on board as a facilities manager for a year and a half, two and a half years. And right away, whenever we were at the selectmen or finance committee or capital outlay, people were congratulating us on, now you can focus on library issues. That's really only been true for the past two months. And so I think we're not looking to manage this project. We could be consult, you know, obviously, consult and provide input, but I thought that's what we hired Sean Libby to do. And, and also the procurement. One other thing that, you know, my concern is, when I first was working for the Marine Corps, I worked, Ronald Reagan had just come into office, so I won't tell you how old I am, but it's my birthday today.
Happy birthday.
So anyway, you know, that was 1980, and they did a lot of contracting out of government functions. So I was a management analyst, and we studied projects, I mean, of functions that were considered inherently governmental and couldn't be contracted out, like the legal office. But there was another department on the base that studied functions that could be contracted out. And what happens is, you, they would write the specifications, the government, like government-wide, the government bid was always the, the more expensive bid because they knew what work had, really had to be done, whereas the contractor only had to go by what was in the contract. So if you said contractor's going to dig up a street and replace a pipe, the specifications didn't say, fill it back in and repave it. So the government would bid, you know, the department had doing that, knew, and they bid on it, so of course the costs were higher. And then as soon as it went to a contractor, you know, you get all these changes that come in. So like, the importance of your, of your good initial contract is really important. And what we found a couple of years ago, we, we had the Emergency Light Project, and we followed the standard town practice, which was that you ask the vendor for a standard contract and they give it to you, and it doesn't protect the town's interest, it, it, that was, provide construction oversight. They never came. We, so it didn't talk about the visits, or what we expected, what we meant by contract oversight. And one clause that, we had major problems on that project. And when we went to the town council, you know, after when we were trying to, there were a lot of omissions in, in the design work. He said, you can't do anything, this is a lousy contractor, you can't just accept what they give you. And it had, one of the clauses was that it required dispute resolution to be done in Rhode Island, where this company was from. So, so we started working on this, and I've talked to Sean about this. Actually, I sent a draft RFQ to Sean and, and Bob Cafarelli in the beginning of March, and so they were going to look at that and add those kind of things. At the time, we thought we were going to have to follow a formal procurement process. And as it turns out, Bob has decided that we don't have to do that, which is great. But we still need to use those basic standards as part of, we take, you know, whatever, this architectural firm gives us as a standard contract and add in those things that we want. Like, one of my concerns is that we have, from what I understand, I've talked to historic preservationists, one of the reasons that chemical stripping is sometimes seen as not successful is because if it's not completely removed, then you have, and you can't see it, and you repaint it, now it's going to peel. And I know I, Don Shore, don't want to hear that in three years. So to add some kind of contract language in there, like, do we expect a minimum of testing, random testing by the architect of 10 places on a side before the contractors are, are approved to proceed with painting? You know, things like that. We, we have no, I know, looked at some other things that talked about what should be in there. I, I've started doing some research, but like liability for town costs that result from design errors or deficiency and redesign responsibility, those are kind, the things that we run into all the time. So Sean is aware of this, and, and he's going to look at it, too. I'm just not really sure. I, I'm feeling like the information we were getting before was that nothing's changed. We're still responsible for the procurement and responsible for oversight. So I talked to Sean, he says, no, he's responsible for the, for managing the project, he feels, and, but, but I think there should be a common understanding that that's the way town projects will work, or else Sean is never going to have, be given the time or staff resources to do the day-to-day work so that he can do these higher-level works and invest the time. And the procurement piece, I'm not really, you know, I don't know how that could, should work, or who should be doing that, but right now, what normally happens is, we take what the vendor has and modify only slightly, and I think that is really key to getting a good project. Everyone always complains about, oh, government projects, and you have to take the lowest bid, and that's why you got a poor result. But you can minimize that with good and clear expectations upfront. So I would expect, like, to be consulted on that, because, you know, we'll take the time and look, and, and Sean expects to provide input on that also.
So could I just ask either, you know, Ginny or the trustees, if Sean and Bob Cafarelli took the lead in putting the documentation together for the project? Project description, work description, scope of, where, all those kinds of things, and you had input to it, although you didn't have to go write it or put it together, but you got to review it. I'm hoping you'd be comfortable with that, to the standpoint that as long as you, you were in the review cycle, and even once the project is going, if, I'll make this up, once a week, that Sean had a, a little session and said, okay, here's the progress he made in the last week, here's our plan for the coming week, you know, here's how it's going to affect library operations, whatever, I would think you folks would be somewhat relieved if that actually happened, so...
Definitely, definitely, that's what, that's what, that's what we want. Yes, that would be, that would be excellent. That's, it's been a long, you know, the last, like, five to seven years have been very time-consuming, a lot of complex issues on major building systems. And so we're just really now getting to the point, I, really, the past two months, that I feel like now I can put my time and attention back on library services. And I know we've been waiting for this.
We want to get you out of the maintenance business.
Yeah, thank you very much, you know...
Except for raising issues and saying, well, this needs maintenance, you know what I mean?
You're always going to be, you're always going to be the, the, like, tenant in the building that, you know...
There you go.
So yes, you have to do that, and, and I don't have any, you know, complete trust and faith in Sean that he would bring issues to our attention and, and, you know, when he needed to.
Peter, I'd like to say, Mary Ward trustee, I think you're right on the right track here. The trustees see themselves in an advisory capacity, either with the procurement piece of this or with the management piece of this. The trustees and the library director do not now own this project. Our role as trustees and our responsibility to the community is to oversee and supervise the condition of the building and grounds, and to bring to the town, bring attention to anything that needs to be repaired or that you need to, you know, consider, you know, for the benefit of the town. So we, we advised on this issue, on the deterioration of the library. The, correctly, the CPC asked that a, a report be done. We followed through with that, we made a public presentation, and the town has approved this project. The trustees and library director now turn this over to the town. However, of course, because of the nature of the project, we are here to advise because of the li, the library issues and so forth. So I would just like to support Ginny and say for the trustees that we, we have other goals for Ginny to accomplish between now and the next six months besides write procurement documents or get into such detail that she, that we start back into this whole process of her becoming too involved with physical projects involving the library.
Okay.
So that's how we see ourselves, as advisors to...
By the way, Bob Cafarelli can look out the window and see the project. We don't need, necessarily need a guy driving down from Boston or someplace to say, okay, I'm here at the site, you know what I mean? I mean, it just seems like it's, it's a big project, but yet it's a very simple project in the scheme of things. Because we're not, we're not going up 30 feet, we're not going out 30 feet, we're not, you know, doing this or that. There's a lot to it, and the devil is in the detail, as always, and it needs to be done right. And I think, you know, Sean and, and Bob Cafarelli, Chris, I hope you agree, are the right ones to put the team together and...
I think you said a little bit more eloquently briefly than I did, but that's exactly what we're looking to do, is Sean and, and Bob will do the work, just making sure the library trustees know what's going on.
Right, and we have input at the correct times. And we're very pleased if you agree if these architects, these, that have done the feasibility study can go ahead and...
That's the one I don't agree on, but that's just because of my, that's because of my personal experience recently with another firm in Boston, and I just, quite frankly, think it ought to be put out to at least two of them to just keep one honest, that's all. Once you put the documents together, I think it's just a matter of asking for a price, right?
Well, again, we'll, you know, refer back to what the town engineer has brought forth and what Chris feels and you feel are appropriate. It does save us time, we have a lot of faith in this architectural firm and the study they've done so far, so we just see it as moving the project along a little bit more efficiently.
Quite frankly, my problem with the gentleman is when he made his presentation on the library, and I forget his name, what's his name?
Doug Manley.
What is it?
Doug Manley.
When he talked about the chimney, and he said, oh yeah, I got my binoculars out and I looked at that, so I know what to do up there. You know, somebody doesn't take the time to climb up there and look, I have a problem with.
There was nothing available for him to climb up on.
Well...
And we were supposed to...
Fire ranger.
Well, again, um...
We weren't asked.
I know, I know, I know, that's, that's all part of the topic, so, anyway, it's okay.
But again, that's what we paid for, so that's why the contract...
I understand.
Right. However you choose to go, there, there is that option to go with this firm, or you can make a different decision, that's really...
I'd just like to keep people honest in the bidding process, that's all. I mean, I, you know, whatever.
We leave that to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Angela. I, I think what you, you've heard from this group is that we want to support the library, we want to do things for you. Somebody's got to make a decision now, who's in charge.
Yes.
Because if we don't make that decision, and, and I'll, I'll be ridiculous, somebody wants to put a red light bulb here, and the library wants a blue light bulb, what, what color is the light bulb going to be? I know it's small, but, yeah, but it's going to come up. So I think, you know, advise is, is not an appropriate term, that, because what that means is that you don't have any control. This board would, would make all the decisions, and I don't think that, that's what should be. So I think you should step up and say that we'll help and do all the things that we can do to help you, but I think you have to be deeply involved in the decision-making.
But we've, I'm Joanne Brown.
If not, Joanne, that'd be fine, we'd be, we, we make those decisions all the time, but let's make the decision now, who is going to do it.
We've been told twice that we own it. We've been told, we've been told by Chris, and we've been told by Bob, that we own it, and that it's up to us to make the decision, and that they'll give us some advice. And that's not what we feel that we are supposed to be doing in this case.
Okay.
I mean, personally, I feel, you know, the team puts together the documentation, whatever that is, to go out for bid or to find what it is they're going to do, and the library trustees, whether they, you know, delegate that to Ginny or whoever they want to do it, they have someone sitting at the table just reviewing the documents and providing input. I mean, it's, you know, somebody says, I want to paint it fuchsia, you know, obviously a number of people can object, you know? But I think it's, I think it's pretty straightforward. If there are six key decisions or whatever that need to be made, I think those just get laid out on the table by, you know, Sean and Bob, and you guys have some input to it to say, well, we prefer to go this way. That's fine, then you move on.
Input's different than running the project.
I, no, I'm not talking about running, we're going to run the project. I don't think there's any, you know, I think the question is...
Procurement, he hasn't been...
The question is, Angela's raising, who's got the ultimate responsibility, I think is, is what we're saying.
Well, who wants to make the decisions, you know? And I, and I...
I think my druthers are the town make the decisions.
That's fine.
You have, you have the ability to review it.
But everybody should know that, that's all.
That's all.
I don't, I don't want it to be dealt with in three months from now. I don't, I don't want it to be dealt with in three months from now.
I think, Mr. Chairman, what the intent of my email was in looking at it, you know, the day-to-day can be done by the town. But I think to Angela's point, if, if Sean and Bob designed, you know, work on this with the designer, they come up that they want the building, you know, a different color, I think there needs to be some buy-in from the library. So maybe I used the wrong terminology, but I think the concept of, there has to be some buy-in. You guys are gonna be in the building.
We are, but, but we're talking, we're talking about the rules, the procurement for procedure for the architectural firm. And right off the bat, we've been told that, that, that we should take care of it from now on.
Yeah, if I, if that came across, I apologize. That was not the intent. That was not the intent.
That was what came across from both you and Bob.
I think where, where we're going is, if, if, really, the question before the selectmen tonight is if the library trustees have confidence and faith in the feasibility study that's done, do we wanna move that designer up to the next stage to have him do the design?
Yes, we do.
That's, so, I think to Angela's point, we just wanna hear that recommendation so that way we don't go off and, and just do something on our own. We want to, to do this as a, you know, partnership. I don't, I don't know what the better term is to use. But in terms of the design process, we don't wanna have Ginny run the, run the engineering. We'll, we'll do that, but we just wanna make sure that if you like the designer, like the work that he did, that we keep going with him. I think to Peter's point, we'll put together the, the bid specs. We'll share with the library trustees to make sure there's nothing in there that, that's offensive. And then if there's nothing in there that's offensive, then we'll go ahead and do it. Sean and Bob know what they're doing. They're, to Peter's point, this is a small project and it can get done timely and efficiently. But you don't go up and paint somebody's home and not ask them what they, what their preferences are. So I think in this scenario.
Well, the scope of work is well-known, right? From the feasibility study.
Yeah, and we have a good sense for it already.
Ginny, from the, from the feasibility study, the scope of work is well-known, right?
Yes.
It's well-defined, right?
Yep.
And I think everybody agrees with what that scope of work is.
Yep.
I mean, that's the basis for starting this documentation process. And as long as you folks have some review input to it, I think we're good.
By the way, we didn't ask to be on the agenda for this 'cause.
I know.
Because we weren't at that point yet. However, the emails have said Bob and Sean would be available to work with the architect during this process and assist in the bid process. The overall effort would be directed by the trustees and the director. Day-to-day would be led by the architect. So that's what the trustees' concern has been, is like, it's like saying nothing's changed. So I'm glad that, that doesn't seem to be.
We're having that discussion right now.
I'm, I'm not sure this is clear, and I hate to be a dead horse, but in six months, if it comes before this board that we should use plastic pillars and we voted for it, right? You have to be in charge of those kinds of decisions. And, and you can't just say, "You, you be in charge." I think what you're hearing from this group is you can use the people in town who would do the stuff normally for the town. It'll get done. You'll get a shot at looking at it and making whatever comments you want. And we're trying to step back so you can have some more control. That's what we're trying to do.
You're trying to do that, I think. I'm not sure the rest of us are. I mean.
Gina Miller trustee, we, we want to be advised, on an advisory position. We do not want to do this project. After spending so much time working with the inverter, you know, that's not our thing. We're not engineers. And that was such a disaster. We don't want to have that situation again end up costing the town a lot of money. Sean and Bob should be in charge. That's why Sean's facility manager, he's such a gift to this town. Let's take advantage of that and just contact us when there's a question, they need our advice on something. But for the most part, let Sean and Bob handle this.
I would say this, once the, once the documentation's put together, if there's an item, six items, whatever, that you strongly object to, make this up. You know, that, that the window's gonna be made out of sugar, whatever. That the group come before us, that they need some guidance and we'll help sort it out.
Right.
We started this three months ago. On March 8th, we started working on this. And we haven't, and there hasn't been any, there's been very little progress on it. We started the request for qualifications.
You mean the library trustees did?
None of the money is, none of the money is available till July 1st.
I know, but we, we had enough money to start.
No one can hear that side of the conversation.
Oh yeah, step the mic, please.
We knew that we had enough money to start on some of this and, and wanted to get the, the approval finished of the, of the architects before July 1st. And that was why we started the beginning of March, trying to get the request for qualifications put together so that we could choose, get, get the, our choice for the architectural firm in place.
Okay, so the, just to be clear, Joanne, the trustees have been putting that together or you hired somebody to do it?
Ginny started on it and sent it, sent it ahead to Sean and, and to Bob.
Okay.
Three months ago.
Okay, alright. So now, after this meeting, their focus will be on moving this forward, I think, so. Michael, did you have a question?
No, I think that, you know, I asked that this be put on the agenda to get a direction so that we understood where, where we were going and to offer our help to the trustees. I think Peter laid it out perfectly. And I think that the town take ownership of this and the library trustees and director advise when needed.
Everybody shaking their heads is okay? Okay, I just.
Save, save a copy of this meeting.
Okay, we'll make sure, yeah, it's okay. Alright. We good with this? We good with this? Everybody's good?
Mr. Chairman, can I have a quick comment, please?
Sure, Chief.
I think we all need to understand something, that Sean Libby has come on board here. He hasn't been here a long time. He's playing catch-up for years and years and years. Now, we approved money for a roof last year. He hasn't got to it yet, but I know why. He's very busy. He's trying to, he's got a whole bunch of things going on, but he is the guy that I believe, as the facility manager, should be doing all the buildings. So he can advise the board of selectmen and the trustees, "Well, you know, maybe we'll have to hold, you guys are gonna have to hold on because over here, this is going on." He's a real busy guy. He's doing the best he can.
Oh, I know.
But if he needs some direction from, from administration to put this as a priority, then so be it. But he is a really busy guy, but he is the guy that should be running the show.
Yeah, we understand, we appreciate, we appreciate that. And, you know, I'd also say that, you know, through the, the budget process, he, he does have a new body coming on board. Although as a plumber, it doesn't really help us with this project much.
With, with, with that, I will just say that from, anything from, you know, a leak in the ceiling, from a stain, stains a tile to failure of our, of our whole heating plant, that's what he's dealing with. So he's, he, he's just a busy guy.
I know. And the best news is, we now have a focal point to deal with all those issues and someone who's capable of at least figuring it all out and getting it done. So, we're all thrilled.
Understood.
Alright, we good with this? Alright, so we are gonna paint it fuchsia, huh? Okay, uh, let's see, that lighter, okay, Town Administration's report.
In terms of, we have a, a couple of issues this evening, Mr. Chairman, to bring up. We did receive electronically today a approval on the 208 plan through the, I think it was through the MEPA process, but we still need to go to the Cape Cod Commission. So one big hurdle has been overcome in terms of having our CWMP plan be approved at the, at the federal level.
By the way, is that the longest approval letter you ever saw in your life?
Oh my goodness, yeah.
It's all attached.
Huh? I kept reading it and reading it and reading it. And it's like, where's the punchline here? I don't know if everybody else saw it, but.
So, good, good news and hopefully we get, get through the commission as, as timely. The second was just a reminder about the Pleasant Bay discussion that will be, I think, on next week's meeting for June 6th to cover the, the two issues. One, the, the letter from the Pleasant Bay Alliance outlining their, their services and their scope and responsibilities for what they'll do as part of that 208 plan. And then also David Young from CDR, C, I'm sorry, CDM Smith will be here to talk about the submission. We have a requirement to submit, I believe it's in the middle of, middle of June, a report on the various watersheds. So they, I think they call it a watershed report. So he has completed that. That will be something that will go over through the board. And the board, acting as the wastewater management authority over those watersheds, need to review and approve that prior to his submission. I do think it's kind of a boilerplate that he was asked certain questions that, that he is specifically responding to. So that will be, and I'm sure his response will, responses will be in line with the CWMP. CWMP is Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, just for, for folks that may not be acquainted with that terminology. And then also, we had a little bit of a flurry of activity up on, I think it's Beach Road in which we had a couple of residents. We do have an extensive amount of material to put into the board package. There's a, it's a little bit, little bit of a strange situation, but there's a residence that live on a property up there and they're the Fitzpatrick family. The town acquired by eminent domain in easement, so they did not take the land. They actually took just an easement over the land. And the Fitzpatrick family has been making improvements, if you would, to not only their property but also the property within the easement, which they have the right to do. We found in the files, I think 2011 or 2013, the, the date escapes me at the moment, that the Fitzpatrick's in the, in the selectment at the time voted an agreement as to what they can and cannot do. And suffice to say that the neighbors have been, have been very concerned that what's being done down there is strictly in adherence to that agreement. So we had probably, I think it came to Conservation, Conservation Director, probably about 20 emails outlining concerns that they have. So I'm kinda doing this publicly too, so if folks are in that area and they see this and they, and they wanna participate in the discussion. At least from administration's standpoint, I did get some complaints, I think, just before the wintertime and that they were alleging that some work was done. The work was done, it was permitted to be done, so there was nothing, nothing in error. He has now put up some additional fencing and now they're questioning the fencing in a, in a nutshell. So we have paperwork for the board that kinda lays out a little bit of the history. We'll certainly attach some of the, the residents that have concerns and we'll put that on for the next meeting and, and see what the board wants to do in terms of make adjustments to the agreement or, or hear them out.
Just, it, it was a very complicated, long-term situation. A lot of court cases, a lot of lawyers. You probably need to go look through the decisions that were made. It's not, it's not simple. I mean.
We have the, the Copelman and Page decision is in, or the write-up is in there. And what we've been trying to do, Angelo, is to, to follow to the letter that agreement.
Because it was a very difficult situation. We should avoid trying to do that again.
But it is a little bit of a, you know, I've been in this business a long time and sometimes you get these neighborhood disputes and.
Sure.
They like to rope the, the government into it, so.
Well, you have to get the facts on the table and go by, go by what the rules and regulations are, so.
So we'll provide that material for you.
Okay.
That concludes my comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Selectmen's Report. We're gonna do B first. That's just a reminder that the Board of Selectmen's Summer Meeting Schedule starts on June 20th. For some reason, the schedule they handed out, you would imply maybe that June 6th was a night off. We don't plan to do that, so. I know you're all disappointed, but, you know, what can I say, right? We have a lot of business to do, so as, as was just mentioned by the town ministry. Okay, so it is time to reorganize the board. It's, it's the right night to do that, according to our rules and regulations, if you will. So you folks have had a chance, hopefully, to think about it. So if there's a motion out there, we'd like to hear it.
Mr. Chair, I move that commencing at the end of this meeting that we move Michael McCaskill into the chair position, Peter Hughes into the vice-chair position, Julie Kavanaugh into the clerk position, Angela Lamontia into the interview committee position and Janelle Brown into the interview committee position.
Is there a second, by the way?
I'll second that.
Yeah, the motion, if I got it right, was Chairman be Michael, be the vice-chair, Angelo be the clerk, is it?
Nope, Julie the clerk.
Julie the clerk, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh yeah, we always give the rookie the clerk. Angelo and Janelle would be on the interview committee. Actually, I don't wanna give up your interview committee.
I'll give it up, you know.
Okay.
Just, just one comment. Janelle, it takes some time to do the interview stuff. You understand that?
Yes, I make my own schedule, so.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
There was.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry. Okay, so move in second. So again, it's, it's Michael the chair, I would be vice-chair. Julie would be the clerk, Angelo and Janelle would be the interview committee. Discussion, if you wanna beg off?
Do you have a choice of doing nothing?
Huh?
Do you have a choice of doing nothing?
That's what I did this year, so I mean, it's okay, so, okay. Alright, so here now, we'll put that to a vote. All's in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. It's a vote. Thank you. Congratulations, everybody. Congratulations, Michael.
Condolences.
Here, we gotta give you this.
Condolences to Michael.
Thank you, thank you for your confidence. I got a lot to learn. Peter's vice-chair, so he can teach.
That's not the way it works.
You're all alone.
I just.
Oh, okay, yeah, whatever works, okay. So your first job is to figure out when you're gonna do agendas.
Yes.
And when, you know, what day you're gonna do agenda and work with the staff downstairs to set that up.
Tomorrow morning at 8:00.
Yeah, if we could, could, could we make it 8:30?
It's starting already.
I got a note from Sandy, so. She said be here at 8:00, but I will be here at 8:30, it's fine with me.
Yeah, we talked, 8:30 would be better.
That's fine with me.
Okay, so as my last act as chairman, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
And thank you for the year, being a chairman.
Yeah, thank you for the year, Peter.
Everybody gets a shot, so.
Yeah, thanks.
I don't know if you remember this or not.
I thought we were gonna talk.